It is July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four at seven ten P M. And this is the regular meeting of the Board of Finance for the Town of Wellington, Connecticut. It's called the Order. We'll start with seating of alternates. So we need one alternate for the seat. For ourselves. Yeah. We have a motion. Somebody that we got an echo. I make a motion. Be all set? Okay, do we have a second? Here, we can make the motion again. Yeah, make a motion to see Melissa Miller for the wall person. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? Any nays? Any unanimous? Next, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for six twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Are there any amendments, changes to the minutes of that day that need to be made?
Move to approve the minutes of June twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Close name? Extensions? Okay. One extension, Melissa. Next, we will move on to present to speak. Public participation is desired and encouraged. Speakers will be limited to time and appropriateness of comments to maintain progress, stay on topic, and maintain decorum. Do we have anybody for present to speak? Me?
Yes. Hi, I'm, uh, my name's Andy Marco, seventy-two Olders Road. I'm here representing or speaking for the Emergency Services Building Committee. And I noticed that that is also on the agenda for Brett to speak to. Are you probably gonna speak about the same things I'm going to?
I'm giving an overview of what we have done so far.
Okay, you're going to speak to the, the ask about then. I'm done.
Okay, anybody else for present to speak? Peter?
Hi, Peter Montecristian ninety-seven Trask Road. I wanted to share some of my thoughts about the budget process with you folks tonight for next year's budget process, which will be here shortly. While you're all resting on the last one. And then one of the things I think that will be helpful to the townspeople like myself is if the Board of Finance started with a, a budget target. Some sense of where they want to be. It seems in recent years, it's just, it's just a process where the various town departments submit budgets and you try and find out what people think they may want, but there doesn't seem to be any coherent process to it. It doesn't seem like you sit down and say, our grant list is X, our other reviews are Y, and we think we can afford X. And then budgets work to some sort of percentage increase that is sustainable for town. So I, I would very much like to see something like that, where you guys sit down up front and decide where you want to go. So all the budget, understand that. Secondly, I, I would like to see a budget schedule that is not loaded in the front with all the budgets that don't matter very much. And then you get to the very end of the budget process, and we have the large budgets like the general government budget, urgency services, public works. These are large budgets. They don't seem to get much discussion because so much time has been spent on these smaller budgets that come first. I'm wondering if you can just dispense with those and focus on the large budgets. Especially in the schedule where we only have, as townspeople, a couple of weeks between the public hearing when the town learns about the budget, what's in it, after you guys have worked on it since December, sometime in April. And then if anyone asks a question about the budget, well, too late, you have to go to the town meeting and we have to get that call done. And we need a number. And it's very difficult for changes to occur or for the community to give feedback because there's very little time between the public hearing and the town meeting. So I, I would ask that you look at that and change your calendar so that we should have four or five weeks for the town to absorb that. You guys have six months. I think the townspeople deserve more time to see that. And then lastly, I'm wondering, I, I, when I visit home where I grew up in New Jersey, every resident in my town gets a letter, a budget letter from the town that says, this is the budget, these are the increases, this is what you're voting for or not voting for. And there is so much confusion in our process. We didn't even have a public hearing after the first referendum failed. There was no discussion of anything. And getting budget information was extremely difficult. So I, I ask you to consider these things as you move towards the next budget year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Peter. Do we have anybody else for present to speak? Can tell.
Hey, this is Nick Tella, forty-nine Myrtle. Just wanna speak as a citizen of Wellington and not as a library board member. I have, I don't know if there's back and forth in, in your setup. If so, if somebody presents a, if any board presents a budget to you guys, is it supposed to be approved by that board?
Could you say it again?
So say a board has a budget and they go during budget season for you guys to okay their, the budget, right? Does it have to be presented to you? Does it have to be presented to you as though it's already been approved from whatever board it's coming from?
Generally, what's agreed on is presented to us.
So like, so, so, okay, just like, let's just say, I'll use a different board, like Board of Selectmen. Say the Board of Selectmen has a budget or Board of Education, they have a budget. Do they have to have it approved by their board before presenting it to you?
Yes, yes, they were.
Okay, so again, speaking as just a, a person of the town, I have concerns that the Board of, of the Library Board had never approved a budget when it came back to you the second time. And to this, to this day, it still has not been officially approved at all, even though we're in the new fiscal year. I just wanted to bring that concern up to you, guys, to let you guys at least know what's going on as in regards to that, that board. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Um, just for clarification, I don't think, uh, we didn't expect another wave of approvals when they came back except for the large in-town budgets. I mean, we didn't really, he's, he's talking in the context of transfer out departments and uh, we didn't ask like Parks and Rec to resubmit or anything like that. We just not official, we're not approving their budgets, we're just saying a bottom line number appropriating based on what they tell us. But.
There anything else?
But, but, but shouldn't, shouldn't that be a, like, if you're getting a bottom line number, shouldn't that have been approved, even if it's a transferring out to a different entity? Shouldn't that have been approved before coming back to you guys?
Right, from your board, yeah.
On your board, yeah.
Yeah, correct. Okay, yeah, cuz that was never done. That was never done.
Not on the side of, no.
Yeah, not, no way.
Be true, on the second referendum, the general government budget just goes to the Board of Selectmen who reviews the entire general government uh, budget and makes decisions based on the bottom line given was by the Board Finance, and that's the only, only thing that happens on the second referendum. It don't even go to the boards for reviewable.
Yeah, I'm not talking about referendum. I'm just saying, when the board had presented their first numbers of, say, two hundred and eighty thousand and change, it got rejected and then it came back to the Board, the Board of Finance with two hundred and sixty-three thou, two hundred and sixty-three thousand. That number was never approved by the board. That, that's the point I'm at. I'm not at the referendum point. I'm, I'm well before that.
Was that brought up during the meetings on the budget?
I have, I've brought it up almost every single meeting, yeah. And it's still not approved to this day, so.
Sounds like a distinction for the bylaws of the group. I mean, we just know what we're, what we're designating, we're not dictating what they give us after that. It's up to them to manipulate the figure.
Are there anything else next?
That's it, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Nick. That's an interesting problem.
Well, I think some departments have confusion and, and, you know, this may be to one of the points that people are bringing up in just, in present to speak here. I think they have confusion about what is, we can make it clear, what is the process and are we communicating after, when we're at the point of deciding on appropriations, are we communicating to them what their figure is, how much it's lower or higher in some cases maybe than, than what they asked for on the record so that, you know, I get a communication from the Board Chair or whatever, uh, so that they know that's, that's what happened. I mean, otherwise, we're just kind of expecting they're gonna catch up with Zoom recordings or wait for the minutes or whatever and hope that, uh, that those figures are correct and they can take those to the bank. So, so that's, that's definitely a valid point there. But I don't think he did that. So they, uh, there, and then when there was a second referendum, I think people were confused, what is our number gonna be? Until that process happened. So a lot of people kind of hung back on enforcing their budgets because they were, thought maybe there could be a third referendum, so.
Yeah, I think what he was saying was that the library budget was presented and it wasn't approved by the library board.
The first time.
Yes.
Yeah, but he, but he's also talking about the other referendum.
Just to clarify, the first one was approved when it got denied from the Board of Finance. It then was supposed to come back to the Board of, Library Board for adjustments, right? To be able to then present the two hundred and sixty-three thousand, which never happened. I, we didn't even know, we, we didn't know the bottom line number until like a week ago. And even now, it's still like unclear what the actual number is. I am only going off of what was on the town paperwork that they passed out to the townspeople. That's the only reason I knew the bottom line number as a treasurer, so.
Could we clarify the record then? Because what you first said, Nick, was that it wasn't approved when the first budget came to us. It was not approved by your board, and that's not so, sounds like.
Yeah, so to be, to be clear, when the first time it came to you guys with that two hundred and eighty thousand and change, it was approved. Then the Board of Finance said, hey, you gotta make cuts and I'm, I'm guessing that next number was two hundred and sixty-three thousand. I don't know, because we've never discussed that sec, that, that new number, but that new number was supposed to then for that.
Right, we can be clear to you all as Board Finance, what your number is after we're at that point of of making reductions or adjustments to your request, yes.
Yeah.
That's a good point for our discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. All right, next is old business, and there is no old business, so we move on to new business. And number one is review the two thousand twenty-four audit engagement letter. Everybody get to receive the copy of that. Done a few personal comments about the engagement letter.
I didn't, it was pretty much a usual standard, like what we do, what we do.
Did anybody wanna have any discussion regarding the letter that's been presented?
I have a couple of points I'd love to raise. Um, first is uh, the the person from our auditors who comes in and presents and gives us the handout and everything. Uh, he, he is not, is he the actual person who audits the town of Wellington?
He oversees the audit. He's responsible for the audit. He reviews it. He does some work on it. But he has worker bees that come out and do the auditing.
Okay.
And he comes out too.
Okay, thanks, Donna. Um, I guess what I would wanna make sure is there, there are times in the past that there are a couple of things I'm gonna bring up. One is we asked during the last budgeting period if, if the town audit covers, uh, for instance, the, uh, Wellington ones, uh, ambulance service, the audit of, of the fire department's finances and was told yes, I believe. Is that right? That it does cover that?
The fund transfer is audited. The expenditures based on the fund transfer is part of their audit, part of the town audit.
Okay, but not, for instance, say, the ambulance finances that are processed and monitored. I mean, we do a third party that does collections and things like that, but is any of that part of the audit, the, the revenues that come in?
The revenues are part of the audit.
Okay, and is, is other, you know, spending, spending per se, is that?
Not from their private funds.
Okay. Okay, um, the reason I'm asking for that is we have a situation which no one here is surprised about because we brought it up a lot in conversation with, um, Wellington one that it's been since tax year twenty-ten, uh, they have not filed a, a tax return, basically, or any tax documents. We've asked for the, in the last three years, Christina, help me if I'm, if I've got the timing right. Three or four years, we've asked, uh, how they're doing with that, and they say that they are not really in conversation with the IRS yet, but their audit or their, uh, CPA is helping prepare those past tax years. I mean, this is fourteen tax years, folks, so it's, uh, it's really in arrears, thirteen tax years. Anyway, so my question is, I'm not really even sure what kind of corporation they are. I'm not sure what kind of entity they are. Are they an LLC? What is their status as, you know, as a, as a corporation, a private entity, which they are, uh, financed by the town? With their relationship with the IRS and the capital projects and the hugeness of them that are on the table, I have real concerns about the town's culpability because it's not being addressed. And I just, I feel like maybe it's something for, uh, your committee, Andy, I don't know, but it just, it feels to me like it's really an elephant in the room. And I, I really don't think we can keep asking the question and accepting we're working on it for any more years. So I'm concerned about, about bringing it up during the audit letter because I would like to feel like there's some kind of a safety net there. I'm reading through this thing, and there's pages and pages of what they're not, they're not in, uh, whatever, at, at legal, uh, threat from us for, you know, things, disclaimers of what they do and don't do cover, and I understand and not of what's the relationship with our town? How far is the audit going and protecting our town? Because we do not have an investigative arm of any kind in this town other than something like paying the auditor fifty thousand or whatever a year to look at the finances. Um, and I'm pretty concerned about the ambulance billing due because that, that becomes an issue with how much is, how much is coming in, how much is it affecting what the taxpayers need to kick in to the continuing success of the fire department and then particularly the ambulance service? So I know there's probably updates on this, um, but I'm just really concerned about this. And so I thought this is, we're talking about legalities, that's, is one of the times to bring it up. That's my major, um, concern. The other thing I'd like to ask is, there's a lot of stuff about third-party associates they have doing work for them with confidential information from the town of Wellington. And I'd like to know either what types of third-party entities are those? And what kind of information is shared? If there's a way to find that out, I'm not saying my approval would be contingent on that, but um, at all. But, uh, you know, I wanna hold you up if you need to get this over. And I know they've been serving us well for a long time. I just, I'm curious about it because with all the identity theft and everything else going on, I just wanna know what that is. Why is that needed as an exclusive?
Wouldn't you choose the third-party entities?
Oh, gosh, I don't know.
You know, I wanna just be able to
Yeah, I can, I can find it for you and zero in on it. I don't think, I don't, I don't have, I don't have my quote, uh, quoted pages on it here. It's just something that jumped out to me.
Page three, it's the bottom of the paragraph.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Bruce.
I can find out all that.
Thank you.
Please, that is my committee. I'll, I'll, I'll look at it.
What's your committee? The?
Uh, Efficiency Committee.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. I thought, I didn't, I know, I thought.
Everything else, so.
Okay, thank you.
We have two committees dealing with fire departments now, we're putting through the hoops.
How very confusing.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I'm sorry to bring this up, like, I know it's a negative and I know everyone's aware of it. And I'm not that, I don't wanna be that person. It's just, I feel that a certain vulnerability of the town with it having gone on this long. I just feel like we need to figure it out if we can. Because I just wanna say, the other transfer out departments are up to date. Like the library files every year, Wellington Hill files every year. So we don't have that, we don't have that situation except in that one place that I know of. I don't know if anyone else says it, but. Thanks.
Thanks. So is there anything else on the, uh, two thousand twenty-four audit engagement letter? Anybody would like to discuss before motions made to accept and have it signed? So make a motion that the, uh, two thousand twenty-four audit engagement letter be accepted as it is per signing. Do we have a second for that? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. Next, we have the update on the Emergency Facilities Building Committee, Brett Rothhauser.
Hi there. Uh, yeah, so we've met probably five times, I think, something like that. Elected the leadership of the board, Andy's the chair, Talos is the vice chair, and I'm the secretary slash treasurer. A budget of two hundred thousand. So we have visited all three firehouse sites over the course of the five meetings. Station thirteen down by Route eighty-four has severe, uh, water and mold issues. It's almost gutted on the inside. Uh, there's some more things that need to be done there, but, uh, it's an ongoing issue with the dampness there, which means that nobody can spend the night inside the building and they have no roofs in there. Two thirteen, which is up by the middle school, uh, that one has a severe lack of space and useful accommodations and facilities. And then Wellington Hill also has a lack of usable space, efficient usable space. So all three stations have problems in, uh, their current use or in any kind of consolidation. So we've been looking at a lot of different possibilities on how to rectify the situation. Um, most immediate problem is that nobody can stay at Station thirteen down by the highway, which is where the ambulance goes out of generally. And houses some of the other vehicles as well as being pretty much the place where the full-time firefighters are supposed to be staying overnight. And they can't because the air quality, uh, failed, and they still have mold issues. So some of the uh, votes that we've gone through and recommendations that we've put forward is obtaining temporary dwelling accommodations to put down in Station thirteen. The camper trailer that they have there only houses one person, which is not acceptable. You really need to have, uh, facilities for two people. So one of them has been staying up at Station two thirteen, and the other one is staying down in Station thirteen, which is not really a great way to have your ambulance crew working. So the dwelling would be roughly forty-five thousand dollars with a seven thousand dollar delivery fee and a fifteen to twenty thousand dollar hookup fee. We've recommended that we ask for a seventy-five thousand dollar uh, release of our budget to obtain one so that we have a place for our two full-time firefighters to stay. Uh, some of the other recommendations that we have agreed upon are a thousand dollars for a site study and a thousand dollars for finding the drainage culvert that's buried under the parking lot in Station thirteen. Uh, some of the other issues that we have noticed is, uh, there needs to be another air quality test down at Station thirteen because they can't stir their gear in there currently until it passes, basically. Because then they can't wear their gear, there are defense and health problems with some of the firefighters down there. Um, we were talking about a commercial dehumidifier to try to mitigate the water problems that they're having down there. And yeah, I think that's, oh, and then remove any wooden structures remaining in Station thirteen because it's contributing to the whole problem. About it?
Update, uh, there was another air quality test done, uh, this week, and it failed.
It did fail, yeah, okay.
Mold is still present, and there's concern about storing their firefighting, the, the gear they wear in that building would be I guess I was like, best help guys.
We're always gonna have a mold issue there with the water problems.
Correct. I have, uh, something on that to the, uh, um, just bought a million-dollar sewer inspector truck. And they have offered to come out for your charge and, and look at those lines for us and see if they can give us useful information. Uh, I feel at, at that price, even if they can't, it's worth it, so they're, they're coming out and they'll be working Detroit. From what I understand, there may be a catch basin or something that the state, uh, paved over, so we can't find it. So we're looking for that as well.
Excited.
Yeah. What I might add to that, I'm not committed as well, Ralph Tulis has done yeoman work on this, uh, found major sections of that drainage going all the way back to the firehouse and apparently terminates in something that was filled in. Uh, that connected to the drainage behind the firehouse, which makes sense because the water comes down from the hill. This, this just didn't happen out of the, this didn't happen out of blue. Somebody disrupted the original, original drainage system. And as Andy says, with the equipment from Putnam, we might be able to reconnect routes. And as Andy says, with the equipment from Putnam, we might be able to reconnect route type, as I'm calling it, the drainage in the rear of the firehouse and resolve the whole issue, it's not as bad as it sounds.
So are they gonna be able to tell if the problem is down at the street?
No, it's up, up, it's a trash road, going, going into the firehouse.
Seems that when they paved trash road, they just buried this, you know, these are the catch basin or drainage stuff or something, and that kind of changed the landscape. And it didn't, I assume they felt, we think that they probably assumed the hard surface would then run the water off. And that really wasn't the case, they didn't, probably no one realized how much water that was taking away from the rear of the building, which is where the water came from, which caused the both to happen.
Did we pay that or did we contract the payment?
I believe it was done by the town of Wellington. Which, when, when trash road was paved, I think Wellington did that, that was prior public works they elected to do what they did, and I don't know if anyone realized the ramifications of it, that's.
Do you know anything about the cost of the Putnam process?
They bought a million-dollar truck.
It's a mutual aid, Senator.
It's a mutual aid.
Well, it isn't.
We're getting mutual aid.
I was gonna say, it's nice we're finally getting something.
And kudos to Andy and Pete, they have the proof in there, they cleared out all around the culvert at the bottom, so they have the parking lot, that's all cleared out now and Ralph's pictures will be inside of the pipe, it's all going in a good direction. It would seem if we can restore that drainage, we can solve the gold problem.
So it doesn't have to do with the sharp, this deep incline, that's not gonna be an ongoing issue?
Yes, that that will be an ongoing issue. Uh, most people say, people far smarter than me say that whole thing should be terrorists, you know, but that's, that's a huge expense. If there's stop-gap measures through more aggressive drainage and, and landscaping, then that would be the short-term problem and, and, and could be had. But ideally, that whole slope would be taken back to a different, different elevation. But that's that's, that's another conversation, but.
Anybody have any other questions?
So, so there's gonna be a formal request for seventy-five thousand dollars?
Probably, yeah, maybe more. Uh, yes, that was gonna be my presence fee was waiting. But great, second part, I would have, but yes, I, I would like to come for you and do a more formal ask with photos and to give you some better background about why this, what happened, what led up to it, and.
But that's two hundred thousand was allocated to do a study, not, not to do actual construction or, or buy another camper.
It wasn't, I mean, I, I have no idea what, I didn't know.
Well, I was in, what was?
I, I didn't know there was any hooks in that, I, I, I was just.
Yeah, that's, that was the thinking, is that this committee was being set up and that they needed some funds to, to figure, to hire consultants or do whatever.
Well, we haven't spent anything, so.
A different idea of use than what was previously approved, so that's.
So this is a new ask, nonetheless.
Well, is it the ask of the committee or is it ask of the part?
It is the ask of the committee.
That's a different.
To, uh, the emergency services building committee to request seventy-five thousand dollars a war to acquire a accessory dormitory unit, crew dwelling unit, we're calling it, or crew quarters unit, we're calling it.
Basically a four in a building?
Uh, yeah, I call it, I call it FEMA trailers, but that's not, that's not a very accurate description, but.
Like a portable classroom kind of thing.
Like a portable classroom, but with the two bedrooms, we have, you know, we have, we have mixed gender firefighters and emergency services personnel. They need several quarters, they need uh, uh, area to, um, eat and survive, and that's what.
And show.
And this is in order to sustain the level of emergency services that the residents of Wellington have become accustomed to. Right now, we're asking firefighters, one person to sleep in a makeshift bunk in one firehouse and the other one to sleep in a camping trailer and then drive the ambulances and meet and go. Don't meet the, uh, needs of the town. Uh, I'm sure you can all imagine how long it would take to talk about a new building. Particularly with the complexities of two separate LLCs that own the land where the town owns all the merchandise. It's complicated. This is a stop-gap measure in order to maintain the level of service and life-saving issues. We're looking at probably a four, five-year window of coming to any kind of, or to develop comprehensive plan about what to do with the current buildings, which are arguably inadequate for the future of Wellington Emergency Services. Uh, there are developments in town, and if you remember the old tourist tavern, if that any of you are. Um, that's being developed into, uh, mixed use, using the new village zone, the village district zoning, where you're gonna have mix of residential and commercial. It's probably gonna happen, if you look at what happened to the old Holiday Mall. Those things can happen in Wellington, we have large landowners that will likely be selling their land in the future. Something that will be developed, we have to plan for that future, and it's not just. Right now, this is a stop-gap measure to keep our firefighters healthy and to keep our firefighters. If you, and look around, volunteerism is very hard to get. The level of training, the level of commitment you ask of our volunteers is pretty fine, it's a part-time job, but it's a full-time commitment. And with our current pay scale, you're paying professional emergency service personnel nineteen thousand dollars a year. And you're asking them to sleep by themselves in a camp trailer and feel great about going to work every day. It's a big ask.
And just to clarify, that, the, that was a solution that was arrived at. Um, the town purchased that camper and it was, it's not even a year ago. Uh, it was in the winter, in the winter months, when this first arose, it was not a permanent solution by any means. Um, I thought it might last longer than, you know, a few months, which appears that it's not really, but well, that's one of my questions is, can that be sold and bring down to seventy-five to sixty-five?
Well, yes, that's, you can't sell it before you provide the new boards. That's where people are gonna stay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I do also would be, you know, I mean, if, if, uh, if monies were approved swiftly, um, the action to get a separate food quarters of the style where it sells two bedrooms, bath, shower, the day, dayroom area, whatever you want to call it. Wouldn't take particularly long, they're basically retail purchases. And then the camper would be sold in the spring rather than the winter because they just sell better in the spring. And, uh, so, and you, I don't know, what do you get, a half, I would have bet twenty-five thousand, probably get fifteen for it. So, yeah, it all comes out of one big bucket, but that money would go back.
Pay thirteen, we paid thirteen.
Pay thirteen for?
Yeah, yeah, so probably only get like nine.
I never been inside, I understand, I was like, oh, outside, I look pretty. All right, so you get, so you get thirteen, you pay thirteen and get nine back. Or whatever.
Yes, in just a few months. We, we talked about, about getting one of these crew cabin. And that seemed like it wasn't an option just six months ago, or whenever this was.
It was, like, that was.
Quick thing, we had to make the decision, it was really quick, we had to do something, so that would be easy, as quick as.
And it worked, and it was a, it was a workable solution for that timeframe, but if you project that out for three to five years, which is unreasonable, I mean, even if you approve the new firehouse for twelve million dollars today, you're not gonna break ground for two years, likely.
Oh, no, I understand.
By the time you get everything done, you're looking at twenty-four months at least, even if the money was approved for brand new structure. So we have to take care of our firefighters and our EMTs and the suits.
I believe that the decision to make that trailer was made before this committee was formed, so they couldn't look at it. But no one had the, the resources to look into all the options and timelines and that's kind of why I asked committee to be formed, so that they could bring all these, uh, options and, and variables together and I, I I think they're doing a very nice job at that. It's a job, I, I, I didn't have the resources to do, so I'm glad Andy's doing it.
So, so this would be a used, seventy-five seems like too low of a number for, for the.
Yeah, well, the, the problem, the, the X factor is how much does it cost to install it? It's like, so probably fifty thousand dollars for the, for a new unit.
But, but a new cam, a new camper is over a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, so. We, uh, I've asked, uh, I asked the committee to get three bids, basically, this bunch of companies, Champion Homes and somebody else. Not too many people responded, we got Mike McColl and Alex Moore, they've sent out a lot of, a lot, a lot of feelers, they've been asking people, they got two responses back. One was a used unit, I think, that didn't look that great, the new one was forty-nine, nine, twelve fifty thousand, something like that. Two-bedroom, bath, rain shower, full shower, bath, little kitchen table, or living room, whatever you want to call it. And, uh, check planning and zoning, it's fine, we don't have any issues there, it doesn't have to go through a five thirty to four or whatever. Uh, eight twenty-four. And, uh, the X factor is the installation. Who does that? How do you tie it into the setup? Electrical could be twenty-five thousand, fifty, forty thousand, I mean, costs like that are astronomical. And they're not very hard to judge until you get a, I think Zlatnik can do it. And they, they put out some feelers to get some rough numbers, but nothing solid yet because, we don't know what. That's, that's why I'm here tonight to sort of throw it out there, because we're gonna be asking for this. You got every member of that fire emergency services committee has been on another commission or something, it's not, it's not winsome, it's not comprehensive, it's something that's beginning a lot of flaps and when this was the priority issue. Was to try and get covering crew quarters at Station thirteen.
When do you think you're gonna put together that and to present it to us?
So does the chairman, yes, it's.
Okay. Okay.
Is that, is that outside, it will be installed outside?
It would be installed outside, I think to the left is another, I don't know if you, I don't know if you've heard about this at all, but we're actively trying to get the land in front of the firehouse uh, from the state. Um, if you look at, if you've been to the firehouse, you know what the flagpole is, it's actually on state way. When they redid thirty-two, they moved up, moved the highway, but they kept the land and we're working with Jeff Gordon and Tanyo Shion to try to acquire that land. Not purchase it, but acquire it.
So, uh, what, my question.
So we'll be on the left side of your.
Left side, that what we're talking about, remember?
Uh, I think it was on the left side is Rome, it would help if we had the uh, state land, because I think there was some questions about offsets, if we don't, but we got to sort of get a bear hat, it's a little.
Left side, did you face the bays or look out?
Looking at, if I'm on thirty-two, looking at the bays, it would be on the left side? Yeah, the.
Right side, right side.
Oh, it is, it's the right side, where the.
Look at the bays, it's gonna be on the right side.
That's good to know.
That's right.
Stage left or stage right?
Right.
Oh, and the septic is on.
So the septic is on that side.
Okay, so that's.
That makes sense.
And then, and then like, I'm, my understanding is it's, it's expensive to sort of make it safe and, and good for the winter, like there's augmenting you have to do, or is, is that all factored into your price?
The expense, uh, to make it four-season, there's skirting and insulation.
Yeah.
Make it four-season, but I don't, it's not, uh, and I don't, you know, I think it's part of the installation expense, and it adds to it if you less, compared to what you wanted in the summer, because it would be four-season. I don't have any, we don't have any hard numbers yet.
Okay.
This is, in the army, you call this a warning. So we're gonna do, telling you we're gonna do it, eventually I'm gonna get, you know, we'll do a little more formally, but this is what we're gonna be asking for.
Has anybody looked at like government auction sites?
Yeah, they don't have any there. They got nothing, we went to the National Guard, went to the military department, went through the home security. Uh, we did that through diligence, but.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know if they would be on there, I just know they have.
It's not. So, almost, well, it's home security.
Home security.
Yeah, they said. Yeah, they said because it's not a declared emergency.
No, I'm saying they have.
Respond.
They have actual auction sites on decommissioned.
Yeah.
That they had, I didn't know if they had a.
They didn't look good. They were cheap, but they looked cheap. They look more like.
Maybe, we don't have a lot of money.
But they, these, these weren't, they, they weren't like. They were more like job trailers.
I don't, I, I lived in one for a while.
Okay.
They're not that good, but they they do a job.
They do the job.
Keep you dry when it's raining.
Yeah. Keep you warm when it's cold, keep you. Well, according to the, the, the people that did that research, they said there weren't any two bedrooms. And there weren't very many, like, there weren't, they wanted.
They were also further away.
I'm looking over there, because those guys were there, what, a couple of Texans?
Yeah, they're not anywhere close.
And, and they weren't good.
And then you gotta hire someone to bring it from Texas to here.
Yeah, and it didn't seem like, the committee did not feel that that was a viable option.
All right, I was just asking.
Based on the cost, like, you're gonna spend thirty thousand on something sight unseen, unless you're gonna fly somebody out there and inspect them all, you gotta spend fifty thousand, you got something brand new, that seventy thousand dollars seems to be money well spent, because we can sell this trailer at the end of its cycle and the very sites you were saying, and if it's kept in good condition and kept in good condition, and that would be the responsibility of that, in the digital fire department to do so. You know, but it's town property, so, you know, certainly look at it, then you sell it and you get some money back. Who knows? It's a good question, and then folks that were looking at it did look in that direction.
Yeah, I still don't know if that, that. Now, do the, um, do the ambulance people have to be housed in the town of Wellington? Can they be housed in another surrounding town?
Not in have response times that, uh, well. I'm not, well, maybe someone else can speak more wisely to it.
Do, do you have a house in Mansfield that you could?
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just asking if, you know, you thought of that possibility.
I mean, sure, getting rid of the time, but it isn't an option, I mean, you can't really house someone in a different town.
Your response time would be twenty-three minutes, and when somebody's gonna get out of bed, drive to the ambulance. I mean, I guess, I, 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 I guess it would be possible.
Yeah, because I'm thinking of mobile home park on the, uh, on Route thirty-two, just on the other side of the town line.
Yeah, but at that point, you gotta, you pay, you got a mobile home, but these ambulances have to be heated. Medications on them, they gotta be in garages. I mean, there, the trucks themselves have to be heated when they're not going down the road. So that, I mean, a mobile home parks out of the way, you know, I have a question, there's no garage.
Or you're thinking about taking the ambulance to somebody's home and leaving it there? Or are you thinking of leaving, or only driving to the ambulance?
No, having the ambulance there.
Yeah, if at all possible. They, they have to be garaged, I think, is the way it is, in a secure facility.
Can I make a timer real quick, do you mind? It's Alex.
Oh, Alex.
Okay, go on, Alex.
Um, just real quick, the biggest thing is, one, getting the staff back together. That is paramount, it is them being apart is our response times are almost double of what they used to be. It's, it's, and it's not safe for one person to arrive at a scene by themselves for most of these calls. Um, that's where we're having the biggest issue. Um, housing us out of town or housing us away from that fire truck and ambulance, that would be detrimental.
Yeah, because you've kind of got the situation now, right, Alex? This is the one we're trying to get out of, you got one, one guy at two thirteen, one guy at thirteen or something.
That's what we're trying to get out of, is getting back together.
What was our difference, does anybody know what the difference of the response time was before and what it is now because they?
That would be a question for Alex, Alex, the question is, what is the difference in response times?
It depends on the, it honestly depends on the type of call, so if it's a psychiatric call, it could be upwards of adding eight minutes, depending on where the call is, so that they can meet and go together. Um, if it's a critical call, one is going by themselves to the scene so that it doesn't add that time. But again, you're going into a scene by yourself. Fire calling, dropping up to a fire call by themselves.
That's dangerous.
The body system is pretty important to stand in a situation.
So Christina, did you did you uh fully explore the the issue on the? The money issue as far as uh as far as does it need to be, does it have to be that, or could it be from another part of the? Um, from another source than what the committee has been.
Yeah, yeah, I I don't know what other source we can use.
Well, I just wasn't sure people understand why it's, I mean, first of all, I just want to be sure that both fire departments are in agreement on that. On this issue, but the, you know, as far as the the process goes, it was, it's in the fiscal year that just passed. Part of it is a hundred and ten thousand was in there for uh surveying and studying Wellington Hill in preparation for. Its future to catch up with what Wellington One has already done and spent town money on doing. That's my understanding. So the original agreement was at at the CIP table anyway, as I recall, correct me if I'm wrong. A hundred and ten from them and the unspent money on uh design and um. Further costs on on developing plan for Wellington One, which was at the time sixty to eighty thousand was the number they were saying. But then they said, well, we have some things that we think we've already got in place that we need to keep spending that on. So I'm not really sure how the. Two hundred thousand is made, but part of it is something that that. You know, the taxpayers have at least voted on it in in a budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. In the, you know, year that just passed last month. So I'm not sure, you know, as far as our process goes. Um, if that money is free and clear to use for a completely different purpose than what it was set aside for.
Well, it's reserved on spending, so requires a town meeting, no matter what you decide. But it is in the CIP for, just as you explained. That is the purpose, and that is what the taxpayers voted on when they voted at the town meeting to approve the CIP. So. I think if you want to change the purpose, you would have to go to a town meeting and get the approval of the taxpayers to change it.
And explain the history.
And explain the history.
Did that happen before they ask before this committee or after? I think it sounds like the town meeting, you could be first, and then we would order finance desk. Right?
I think it can be at the same town meeting.
Right, but the town meeting is at this meeting.
Right, right. Like, we would make a recommendation that the board, like we call a town meeting, and we would say where this where the funds would come from.
Yeah, yeah, that that doesn't happen. I hope that two hundred thousand, it doesn't have to.
It doesn't have to, but we don't have another place to tell from, honestly.
When when was that voted on? I don't know the answer, so.
When was it? What?
When was voted? When when was the CIP allocation for the two hundred thousand?
The town meeting.
That's the town meeting.
At the town meeting in April?
April of.
This year.
Of this year, after the mold. They already knew about the mold. That happened in February. I don't know if they knew the extended. I don't know when service master went in there and said, oh, the mold goes all the way to the ceiling. I think that.
Mold was first.
The mold was first.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
We already spent money on mold mold remediation and that that was apparently. Too, I mean, temporary effects, not for long, because now we've got it back, right?
So then the so the.
We've already spent quite a lot.
That then the then this money was allocated to do studies, but not provide a solution.
Right.
Right, I guess our priority is that the solution is a multimillion dollar solution. That's that's where we were, and we thought. Before we spend multi millions, we need to know that it's the right thing to do. I mean, the the thinking was too, is it even? Does it make sense to even build there? Because if if the water's coming off the hill like that, um, we we don't we don't know. That's why the committee was formed. And then Pete came and asked for money for the committee. The Pete.
It actually took the two hundred thousand dollars, the two hundred thousand dollars was originally for planning for the. Uh forty-nine property over at Twenty-Five Old Farms, and was moved over and the wording I. I thought had changed so that they could use it for whatever they needed to get to the planning, you know, to the this building stage. Which would include this, but I I I could be wrong on that. My my memory is a little.
Well, I think what we thought on CIP anyway was that, you know, it was combined funds that were that equal two hundred, a hundred, more than half of it was the hill.
Right.
Um, and that it would and that and it was questionable, questionable about where the rest of it. Was going to be coming from, because I don't know if Wellington One sort of said yes, or if they continue to spend it on remediation or whatever. But at any rate, I guess the question I want to know, number one, and James is right here, you're the president, right?
Yeah.
Um, how does Wellington what? How does Wellington Hill feel about that?
I mean, it's it's a target for emergency services that has nothing to do with my department or their department, something that has to be done. I mean, to be, I mean, some of them are working double shifts by yourself. You're gonna go sort of crazy. I mean. I mean, people sleep different shifts, but I mean, to not have, I mean, something happens. It it becomes an issue because nobody's there to.
Right.
See, so. It's 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 cross-board, both departments to agree that they have to be together.
Great conversation, by the way. This is exactly what I hoped to gain by coming tonight, is this conversation. Um, so what I'm hearing is that two hundred thousand dollars was allocated for studies and research. Uh to determine what was the best course of action for emergency services going forward.
Exactly.
But we still have this two hundred thousand that the taxpayers agreed to. I can't speak for the committee in this point. Let's say this is now just Andy Marco resident saying, okay. What if we go back now? Situation has changed. The you know, the the ground situation is now different. Um, uh, people have come together from uh from professional emergency service personnel, play people in town, engineers, uh. And just determined that there is a critical need to do exactly what change and get people together, put them in the safe housing so they can respond appropriately. I think it is fair to go back to the residents, Tom, to say, you voted on a two hundred thousand dollar. Price tag to find out about emergency or to to explore emergency services. We have this critical need. Would you be willing to or? Doesn't to ask for more money doesn't make sense to me right now, but again, this is Andy talking about the committee. Um, but it might be fair to ask the residents if they would be willing to reform that original. Uh money, the concept of all money would be spent into this, so to. Buy these, buy this trailer or buy this uh dormitory, crew dwelling and get the station up and running. Um, equipment could be stored. Uniforms, maybe not, but we are look, there are, we did talk on mitigation for this mold. Again, the study just came back. Alex is online, he needs to speak to it more accurately, but. Came back with 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 higher level of mold that is satisfactory. Now, that would go away. When humidity drops and it gets colder, because mold dies and it probably wouldn't be airborne anymore. But it would solve the problem, but as Peter was talking about these drainage, the drainage initiative done through the uh public works. Which is not without a cost, but it's not contractor cost. It's a little different. Uh should make inroads into reducing moisture and the mold. So ideally, equipment, uniforms, everything can be stored in the current building. Crew can be stored in the same place, and emergency services will go back to their level of response prior to Station thirteen being unused. And I don't know if I'm wrong about that. Um. But I don't know what to, I would appreciate any guidance. Now I'm back being the chairman. Say if that was to pass, what would be my force of action? Um, and of course, this will be brought up to the committee as a whole. And. We would discuss further because I don't think we knew the two hundred thousand dollars had conditions on it. I didn't. To me, that makes the most sense, yeah. Well.
I I would like to know if the committee plans to do any studies. Because if you do, then you shouldn't use that two hundred thousand for anything but that.
There's one study, there's one study, there's the location study that Mike McCoo has probably talked about. Um, committee's kind of divided on its value. Um, Taish, the one, the the company that does a lot of GIS stuff, um, Mike Tomato is a is a. Uh principal member, principal member that has offered that he could do a. Uh, what do they call it? A call space? He could do, yeah, kind of like a heat map, but where the calls are, that will give us some insight. Yeah, we've had the opportunity to look at several of these studies. I'd be happy to forward that to anybody who's interested, other these location. Studies, station location studies. Um, they talk a lot about culture. Um, and quite, you know, and then then they kind of get into the nitty-gritty of where are your calls, what are you doing, where are you going, and. Times and all that stuff. But quite a bit of these studies focus on culture. Uh, and and I think one of the, from one of the, I. Find the culture of the two departments to be quite rich, very collaborative and very sharing, so. Every single study I read notes about volunteering is low, and towns will have to. Consider full-time staff if they're gonna maintain a level of uh emergency response. Uh, people just aren't volunteering and the cost of training are high.
I think the the whole rub for me is, I don't have any dispute whatsoever with what you guys are presenting in terms of short-term need. I don't for for Wellington One and the the ordering of the of the staff. I don't have any. Problem with realizing that we need to do that in the short run. I what I have a problem with is I thought the committee was seated to look at the big picture for our town.
We are.
And emergency services, and I feel like the focus right now is all short-term. And what I don't.
Short-term, well, it's a term. You're talking five.
No, no, I mean, what I want to share with uh or what I want to uh peg on to what Christine is saying is. I I don't think it's all or nothing. I can see where we can use a portion of this money and then, but. But then there's like four or five other things here that I wouldn't want to see all of that go to, and I guess. What I thought we were gonna get out of this joint committee is a real sense that I think everybody wants this really good data about calls. And I don't really want to do something that's like a halfway approach that we do in-house with the land use department. I'd really like to see. Good data, because what I think the people of town need is what is the real picture? They don't understand that. They really, a lot of them don't even know there are two fire departments, and a lot of them don't know one of them is. Fully that, you know, fully volunteer and the other one is um mostly paid. Um, so it's. I just think that to figure out this really big issue that you guys have on your table. I think we need good data, and I think, you know, we're kind of talking ourselves out of doing that step. And yet we don't have anything that's. I mean, we hear about these twenty-year-old studies that are around, but we really don't have a good. Unbiased group doing a study that has expertise in emergency services and is. Willing to study our town and all its quirkiness, the fact that it's vast and the fact that it has, and we have facilities in different parts of town that could be. Um, you know, repurposed into a bigger master plan. So um. So that's all I'm saying is, you know, I feel like, don't don't let that, don't let the land get further away as we're drifting out on the iceberg.
That's one of the things that we've been working on in the meetings, and I I didn't mention it because it's a bit of every meeting has been talking about these studies. And whether the usefulness of the studies, the kind of studies that we've already done, what kind of information is already in there, whether we can do one of these stopgap halfway studies. Where we take some of the data from the old studies and have it analyzed by impartial third party. Um, all of these have been discussed, and there's been a lot of discussions of the fifty-year plan, because any of the firehouses should be built. For fifty years of use, basically, to get you used out of them. Um, and so there have been conversations about the purchased property across from Wellington Hill Church.
Twenty-five.
Twenty, thank you, twenty-five. Um, so, you know, we've been bouncing those around, but since no real. Uh, decisions have been made on those things yet, that's why I didn't present them, but all of these things are continually being discussed. As a part of just about every meeting we have. So so Andy. This this is what I've been saying all along, is that eventually, whatever whatever gets decided by this committee and. Ends up coming to the to a town meeting. At that town meeting, and I'm not I'm not talking about the short term buying a trailer. I'm talking about the big, like, potentially. Ten, fifteen, twenty million dollar project, whatever this is gonna be. When you get, when you get to that point, you're gonna have to have all this information and really make a case that makes sense to. The majority of people in town. At first, it has to make sense to the majority of people on the Board of Finance.
Correct.
Then it has to make sense to the majority of people on the Board of Selectmen, and then it has to make sense to the majority of people who show up at that town meeting, and then people are gonna have to vote on it. And if so, it needs to make sense, and there needs to be a lot of homework done.
Correct.
So that's what the two hundred thousand dollars was for.
Okay.
So if you're saying you don't need two hundred thousand dollars to do that, that's fine, but. That that's I that's what we would need to hear when.
That's and that's for the committee to decide, not me. Like I said, I don't I don't. I did not know that there were that, those were the conditions.
Yeah.
And uh my fault. I didn't even think about it. I don't think anyone else did because it never came up. Um, one of the things about the um, one of the things that these. The the studies cost twenty-nine-nine. The location, it's a set price by state Connecticut. No, I'm not lying, it's twenty-nine thousand nine hundred. And and it's just, I mean, when you look at who does it, it's one one's a husband and wife team that does it. One is somebody else out of Glassett Valley. Somebody else is from Westport. I don't know. They're just teams of people that have elected to do this, just like Taish might do. They're not, you can say that they're experts, what, because they did Avon, because they did.
Well, no, I was talking about the one that McCoo put on the.
That's the one. That's that's the one.
I thought that was a national group.
No, no, they're just.
It's a national, it's a national standard.
It's a national standard, but it's just individual, it's just people that say we, and they get, you know, they get their information.
Because it's not just internal to Connecticut, that's the.
No, they're gonna get their information from Tyler Millet's over at uh.
TN.
She got over at over at TN, which is the dispatch center, but she's though they have all the data. Now. Uh, Taish can get that same data and put it into just simple jet for like seven fifty bucks, eight hundred, under a thousand dollars. And and that is that is gonna be one of the same data that an outside party would use to do the same kind of mapping for twenty-nine-nine. And the twenty-nine-nine gets into culture about what, you know, how to boost morale and how, it's like, okay, that's good stuff. But I don't think that's what we need to have the very conversations you're talking about. Talk about where our fire, where our emergency services are deploying, what are they doing, how much time is on site, all that stuff, I think could be solved. With a lower-level study, and also for the committee to start thinking along those lines. And okay, now we have all this data. Now a more robust study, uh maybe deeper or broader, would be valuable to us. Um, it would definitely be valuable if we are going to ask for outside money. It would probably be almost a requirement if we were going to apply grants or or other types of uh. Of of monies for that. I know that that, well, I just saw on the legislative board that the. Wellington two that asked for a couple hundred thousand for those.
Say two.
They'll say two.
Yeah, well, Wellington Hill.
I never heard.
It falls out of my mouth so easily. That's what it was so long. I've lived here a long time. Um, that's a third rail already.
Well, then you have to figure out, is it thirteen, is it one, is it?
Yeah. Um, anyway, um, and I understand that that was approved, but I haven't seen anything in the legislative calendar that says that much stuff. Um, but that was specifically for Wellington Hill, so.
Well, to me, the 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 expertise of that and the history of why two hundred K? Two hundred K is what we gave the SBC. Two hundred K is what we did for unwillington that, you know, and taught and Taman oversaw the committee on. Those both of those groups gave back significant bucks from that. Um, but the 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 question I have is. It, I mean, the idea I have is that part of that money is the expertise for figuring out the strategy in a in a pretty complex situation. A complex town with complex facilities that are existing and and whatever future facility might be. So, it's not just about doing the heat map.
No, it's not.
It's about that other stuff to put a good cohesive plan on the table, right?
I, yes, uh, correct, uh, if we, I did one of the scenarios we threw out with, and particularly with the most recent. Um, you know, a budget referendum process, uh, clearly the residents are not interested in spending a lot of money. I mean, that, that was fairly clear, so if the location study came out with, oh, the town should purchase. You know, forty acres in the middle of town and build a twelve million dollar facility is gonna, well, that's not gonna happen, I mean, that's, at least that's. The way I feel, I just don't see that as happening, so then you spend thirty thousand dollars, well, thank you very much. That's not gonna happen right now. So, um, what has to happen?
But what if we have to spend twenty million dollars to have two, two?
Maybe that's the story.
Or at the end of the day, they can figure out, it's okay, just put these, this building back together and it's all gonna be okay.
Yes, yeah.
I, I, I like your optimism.
Well, it's gonna happen, but I let drop, a lot of things in our, that can't, that are, in our very first, in our very first meeting.
It's the first time I've, I've heard anyone call the, calling you optimistic, yeah.
In our very first meeting, it was the exact discussion we had and everyone agreed in that meeting that the priority had to be. Getting station thirteen as to a viable. Emergency services facility. And this is members of both fire departments, any of us, and everybody on board said, yep. That's what we have to start with, once we get that done. Then we can relax knowing that the town is protected and then we can start focusing on, okay, what do we need? And just in talking with, I didn't share this with the whole committee, but. The very act of having a separate group orders and a separate building will give us insight as to how that. How that works, because in the past they lived inside the building and, uh, so now you have almost a. An image of what a new facility could be, separate living quarters, separate housing for truck, which is different, I mean. You don't have to have the same level of. Structure if you're not housing people. They could be built in different ways, so to me, this will give us some insight, I'm very interested that if this was approved. How would that fire department set up this new build, once they take out all of their, they still have kitchen and a day room, once they take that out. How will they organize that new, you know, their new floor plan to maximize space? How that work will be interesting to say, that'll be insight as to what a facility needs is to me, just how. But, you know, people are incredibly creative and industrious and they make things work. And I, I, so the fire departments have been doing that for a long time, making things work. And, uh, there'll be, you know, um, that in and of itself will be information we can use to go forward and talk about. What has to be done, I personally feel there's enough brain trust in that room. To, you could almost create the very study that you're talking about with some basic information. I'm not sure that two people who have. Said they know this stuff, already smarter than anyone sitting in there, well, a lot smarter than me, but not the professional. Emergency service personnel, they, they're not good people in there, they've been doing this a long time. And. Uh, I really think they could analyze data almost as well as a third-party candidate, because I'm not saying. That a third-party candidate doesn't offer value, but I think we can start at a little lower level and get a great deal of information. That would be presented in the town. And, and educate. This commission and notice committee and everybody else. That's my opinion. Sort of later, I'm gonna come up with a, so what would be the next steps? Alright, so we need a hundred thousand dollars. How do I go about getting it? As chairman representing a committee, what do I have to do?
I missed something.
I'm just.
You gotta figure out where it's gonna come from and how, if you.
But I have to figure that out?
Well, we do.
Comes out of the two hundred thousand, we already, you already did. Okay, so that's what I'm asking, how, I don't know how this works, the only budget I ever presented was planning and zoning and it wasn't approved. And we didn't approve the second one, you said, oh, well, we didn't get it, so we go back to the old. I don't think we voted on it either, I don't remember.
So, so you, so typically you need, you need to go back to your committee. Come up with a, an actual, like, like, we have this trailer to buy, it costs this much money, it's gonna cost this much to connect it. This is our whole budget for the project and, and you know exactly how much you need and then you should come to us and say. We need the money for this, to do this thing and then the only other complication is. That we don't have that money set aside for you for that purpose, so you just would need to tell us, you know, have the committee even vote on it, say. We don't, you don't think you need all that money for this, this study. And that it could be reallocated to this.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's what I, it's not, it's not too, I just wanna make, it's not two hundred thousand for a study. Right, it's two hundred thousand for expertise, so, so anything, you know, like. Uh, architectural or, you know, any other consulting is out of that.
Right.
So think about it that way.
Yes, no, I, I understand now. Alright, so I guess I'm gonna go back to the committee and just say. We're basically just asking for this new number and it's outside of the number we've already been allocated. Which I don't think, I don't know if it's standard, it's not someone's secretary or, um, recording services, I don't really know. Administrative services, um. So, yeah, um, and then we will, we'll get the bids for. The buildings of, or these structures themselves and we'll get some. I mean, I, I don't know how solid these bids can be, uh, I don't, I don't know, um. Without knowing exactly what trailer you were gonna get, picture, actually change some installation costs, I'm guessing. But there's some outside the realm of possibility, so they'd be probably raw numbers. Uh, but at least accurate as we could get them from contractors, it's already at the works that we do that, uh. That, that's happening, um, I don't know how hard we're doing it, we'll do it harder now that we've had this conversation, so, and then.
Like, for instance, one example might be site assessment at the various spots in town. You know, twenty-four, twenty-five, thirteen, two thirteen. Do you want, you know, do you need site expertise, you know, you've already talked about the slope at, you know, where thirteen is. That's that kind of expertise that feeds the committee's process, that the committee itself doesn't necessarily have the expertise for.
Correct. Alright.
Any other questions regarding that?
Well, there's a wave one, I thought we were gonna get to ice and that's great.
Yeah.
But, I don't know when we were actually gonna get into this, it feels like I was gonna, six weeks down the meetings you guys. It's the first time we've had any.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah, committee, so that's.
Well, we finally, you know, it takes a while to get things moving and, you know.
Maybe I should actually, you know, pay attention to the boredom on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I do that sometimes, it's. Kind of caught. You can come to our meetings every time, we'd love to have.
That's true, I kind of promise somebody I would. Show up once in a while, you know, like, we'll comment.
Second point versus, there are none.
Alright, bro, ready to move on?
Sure.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, so, uh, next on their new business is review of their clear two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five budget process. Would like to start?
I just, you know, for being here forever, um. Historically, and I'll just go back like ten years. It was barely, you barely got ten percent of the registered voter population to vote, to even come out and vote on that. Budget referendum. There were years, so that's about three hundred people, there were years, recent years where we barely even hit three hundred, so this first referendum, we got. Twice that. And the second one, we, we, we went a hundred and fifty over that.
Yeah, we got, we had twenty-two percent in the second one and sixteen.
Still not, you know, still not great considering, but you had a lot more voter engagement, which was nice to see.
No, no, I was just gonna, cause you guys, you guys had it in your packet before, but, um. I just wanted to. Enter into the record because just for our memory, you know, like, uh, I mean, attach it to the, whatever the minutes. This, the tall and, the way tall and handed, you guys want it?
I got it in my.
Yeah, you have it? Okay, well, did you guys read it? Cause we didn't talk about it last time.
I mean, I read it when it came to any of your guys, United States total. Cap town taxpayer.
Oh, okay, well, you've got, you've got special knowledge. So anyway, the reason, this is, this kind of running me what Pete was saying in, in president's speak. This is because we don't, we used to have, you know, daily newspapers, basically that covered the budget. So, you know, you knew if you, if you took a paper or you just were listening around, people said, go look at this, you know. You knew the details of the budget and we don't really have that anymore, so that's what we were trying to recommend is that the three big budgeters. You know, Pete and the board of Ed and, and Bruce as the board of finance person would. Um, put together communication to the voters that would go every door direct and fill in some of the blanks with a narrative. Because what Donna puts together is good as far as, uh, the, the actual figures that we hand out at the town meeting and the budget hearing. And that is, you know, just the data, but honestly, I think ninety percent of people. Don't necessarily know how to read that document. It's like they can, you can point to, you know, specific big numbers that they would care about, you know, the. The grand total percentage increase year over year or whatever, but it's not. Something that a lot of people look at a chart like that and lays over, so I think what Tallon did, and this was after they had. Two failed referendums, this was before the third, is that, is that what it was? Yeah, they had three total, didn't they? Four total, so this was before the fourth. That, you know, and they actually, you know, provided some narrative, two pages. And yes, some chart material that was very, you know, compared to other fiscal years and, you know, and they had like some. You know, a couple of funky, you know, complications because they moved some, a big, a big amount over to a debt service part of the budget and all that. Um, which didn't really do anything with the spending, but changed the category, so they explained that to their, to their folks. We had a couple of big drivers this year that we haven't had before, it would have given us an opportunity to explain that. It's not, um, it's, it's informational with chart information, but it's something better than just. What the question on the ballot is, on the referendum ballot, which is. Do you agree to spend, what, whatever, do you, you know, agree, vote yes or no on this budget, adheres the big, big number with no detail at all? Um, and there's just no undercutting anymore to explain this stuff. So, um, I just think it's, it's a crucial thing for us to feel that it's our responsibility to put together. With, uh, you know, with other stakeholders in the town, government. Um, to, to clarify what it is so that there's not this. Um, emptiness as far as people understanding what's in the budget. And do they care enough? Well, not everybody will, I understand that, but if something's coming to your household. You're at least, and it's from the town, you're at least gonna take a look at it. Um, it's like the confusion we have now about people, you know. If they go, if they read the, uh, Wellington Wire, they're gonna understand that, you know, people are gonna knock on their door about the revaluation. But do they know that? Is it even on their radar? No, it's not. So, that's why I think that's, that's, that's gotta be a piece of what we do going forward, it's, it's a different landscape. Um, so that's what I would put on the table about it. About our budget process. And the aforementioned. Follow-up on, on the stage where we're, where we're deciding on, on what the impact is gonna be on, you know, the actual budget requests. That when we actually make the decision, we need to, we need to send a communication. That says, you asked for, you know, ten percent growth, you got four, you know, and this is your number.
Right, I think, I think we did attempt to do something like that, but we had a breakdown in, um, what people were. Seeing as. The facts of the matter. And that, that, I don't understand that, um, I think that. The numbers of the numbers, the reasons why are the reasons why, I don't think that that's subjective, but, um. That's, that's, but that's what happens.
Right, well, if they're not subjective, how come the letter wasn't released after the town meeting? I mean, then you're having a blackout period, if it's a letter of that, because it can't be released, so it wasn't released. They ended up doing was they stuck it in the backpacks of kids at the schools, bring them to their parents and that was it. So, it was all on the website, it was released on, uh. Something else.
It was in the email, in the town email, it went out to everybody who signed up for it, and then it got shared on the town Facebook page too.
Yes, yeah, but the original plan was to send one out to every single household in town.
Right. And nothing happened, I mean, we sat on it for way too long.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's.
It, and.
So you need to make a policy to do this and spend, spend the money to send out a mailer every year. Or you don't. Like anything, things are gonna cost money. Fortify has always had a budget, it was always, no, wherever miniscule money you, it is, it was just cut, you know, it's an easy thing to cut back on. We cut back on the annual report years ago. It was actually a printed bound document, stopped doing that, started doing that now, we don't do that anymore. So, at some point, you have. Spend a little bit of money on something. If you wanted, if that's what you wanna do. I, I, if you wanna get this through the.
I think we wanted to that, what we need to do is we needed to start way early because. One of the reasons we didn't go with the mailers, one, we didn't have the postage, two, we didn't have a mail list. Well, you got. Mailed everybody in town, but then. You know, it's. Even, even with. Pete sending stuff to town Republicans, we got how many back? You know, ninety or a hundred back and that's off of a, a good mail list, so.
But every door direct is done by the postal service and actually goes.
Right, but it's, it's, it's not, it's not the same as, uh, uh, first class, either they get it there when, when, when it's.
No, you can, you can be time sensitive, but you can't give it to them the day before, you know, it's, uh. You, and, and if we were ahead of the game, we could do that, I mean, and they're, and they're one, that's reliable, they've got a priority on that.
It's very easy for them, cause they just take it out of the tray.
And everyone gets one, it's not like you get one for, you know, him and her and, you know, whatever. So.
Does that actually still happen at our local post office?
Yes, local meaning Tallon.
Well, that's what I wanna say, because we, we technically don't, well, we have a post office, but we don't have it.
Well, Tallon manages it, but Tallon doesn't.
Well, that's what I meant, we still have a post office here.
But, it's sort of like, yeah, yeah.
It's a storefront.
Well, yeah, but they had to have a.
Well, to the point of backing things up, that's, that's, uh, that's a valid thing too, Bruce, you know, just like. When the, when the budget letter goes out is kind of the kickoff of the season that, you know, we can do that earlier, um. Uh, the, you know, the idea that Pete L was bringing up, you know, with the, the whole process being. You know, I mean, I don't, I, I don't, I don't have any big opinion on or knowledge about that, but. I do know that the way we set up the budget season is the biggest budget comes, come in at the last minute. Part of that is because it's more complicated, so the selectmen's budget is always the last to be. Uh, to go through, the board event budget is maybe a week before that, so those are the, the, the two big ones and. And yes, they come in late.
They need time themselves to.
They do need time, but that's the whole point, if you back up, if you back up the season. Do they have more time and are we not like rushing at the last minute, are the citizens not rushing at the last minute?
Every one of these meetings is is on YouTube. Every, all the minutes are published. Anybody who wants to know the thinking of this committee can find the thinking of this committee. It's not vaguely hidden. So at what point is, do they not have the information because they don't want it? Or because we're not giving it to them? We're, we're making it available, we're just not pushing.
You, but, but we're, we're not making it easy to find. We're not, no, we're not, Pete, really, how?
No, 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 really, it's, it's online, it's on YouTube, it's.
And I, and, and what I, I know, I know what it is, I know where it is. You have to, as voters, know how to, know where you should find it, where you should look for it. Some people sign up to have it pushed at them, but other people don't. Most, the majority of people do not. What I'm saying is, it's a.
They, they weren't, weren't failing to do that, or because they don't want it? I, I, I don't know what that motivation is.
I don't.
You got more, you got more than double.
I can't say.
You got more than double the normal voter engagement. And now you're pissed off that they voted in the wrong way.
No, no, we don't.
Well, that's basically what you said.
No, you guys.
Cause they had to go to the second round.
Instead of the, just.
This isn't a totalitarian society where we often get to think of.
I don't, I agree, it's not.
Want is that you believe that.
No, okay.
People should be voting of particular.
You're, you're missing my main.
It's.
Here. My main point is that.
I don't. I could be wrong in the way.
If it pass, wait, if it passed, would, would you still be complaining about not enough information to vote?
Yeah, I've always complained about that. I've always complained about that. You're missing the point.
I could be wrong about the way I'm interpreting what you're saying. But I'm gonna try to break it down and bring. The heat down a little bit because it's, it's getting a little ridiculous, cause. We're getting personal now, instead of just discussing the facts. But I think you were saying, not that the voters don't understand what we've presented. They don't know the why, right? Like, is it gonna hurt to send out a letter with, hey, this? We really have these roads that are terrible and they need to be paved. This is why that line item went up, or. The ceiling in the library is falling down because the roof is leaking, that's why that line item went up.
Exactly.
It's not, I don't think she's trying to say that the people are ignorant to any, well, actually, no. She is saying that they're ignorant, but not, it's not a willful ignorance and it's not, it's not na- no, it's just that they don't have the information. They don't have the why. That in itself is the definition of ignorance. It's not always a bad.
Yeah, just a bunch of doggies, I guess.
Could just clarify this. The big thing I'm saying is, the world of information is completely different. It, it used to be that people who wa- who were engaged in their, in the town's business. Could pick up a Willimantic Chronicle, or a J I, or whatever, read the actual, you know. Uh, just articulated, here's the elements of the budget, that story would have something like, the reason it's going up in education is this. The reason it's going down here is this. They wanted to do a big road project, they had to cut it out in the final throes of the budget. Which we kinda did. We were gonna put a lot more money into the roads this year. And we had to go back at it, remember, folks? Okay, so it would have that context. And it explains the process that we're all spending a lot of time on. To the benefit of the people making the decision on whether to pass it or fail it. Whether they pass it or fail it is completely their business. But I'm saying, there's no context, there's no longer the, the daily reporting there once was. Neither is there on the personalities who run for office in town. There just isn't. It's a vacuum. So, that's what I'm saying, I think as a town, it makes sense for us to review this and. Do something like what Tallinn chose to do. Um, and then what other towns are doing. Ashford prints, um. A publication that goes every door direct, is it every month? It's every, uh, they, they print it, it goes every door direct and it's like, uh, it's like their own kind of town paper. Has all kinds of stuff in it and information about negotiating town hall, would have a story on the revow essentially, or something like that. And, um, that's what they're doing to. We're way far behind that kind of effort. So that's all I'm saying. Sue me for wanting to get more information, how's it?
It, it is true, though, when we vote to move a budget forward. Then we, as a, as a board, it takes a majority to set, to do it. And once that happens, that becomes the, the budget that we are recommending. And if we are recommending it, we should explain why. And if you don't agree with it personally and you vote no against it, that doesn't give you the right to say, um. No, I'm not gonna explain this, or I'm gonna leave some of these things out. It, it just doesn't.
Nobody said that.
That's what happens.
Am I here to present the board's education and their position? None of us are. We're here to represent the taxpayers of the town, go like that, that's what we do. There's quite, it's like Peter said, there's plenty of access to information out there. People have been asked by the town to sign up for the, uh, town's online news and everything to receive it. People choose to do it, they do it, people choose not to, they're not going to. I think that no matter what you send out, that people are either going to pay attention to it because they're paying attention to start with. Or they're going to ignore it because they're ignoring it to start with, but that's their choice. But as far as coming up with a lengthy explanation about why they should be accepting the budget, it's like I said. I was in favor of seventy-five percent of that letter, but I felt that the budget summary should have been on there and it wasn't. It was just the board event's position, basically.
I, I believe, uh, I think that even though it, it didn't appear in that letter, there was a link in that. Because it went out electronically, there was a link that took you right to the budget summary. So i- i- ineffective was there, it just wasn't on the cover page.
You mean the numbers?
The old numbers.
There, it was.
Any more on this topic at this time? Alright, we'll move on then. So next is the, uh, June two thousand twenty-four financial report by Donna Tink Six.
So in June thirty, we had a soft close, and our hard close is gonna be in middle of August. So what you see when the expenditures are through June thirtieth. And we're, we're still processing expenditures, um, probably on his fifteen. The revenues, I would say, are, uh, probably pretty solid numbers. And what's, what's been received through June thirtieth is what we'll have. For the fiscal year. And then came out pretty much what we expected. Every revenue line I see with the budget.
Did you expect the six hundred thousand and under thirty?
The under, the spending. The, um, you're still relieving incomparances. And so I expect, I fully expect the board then to spend their budget. And I expect the town in, you know, region nineteen has already spent theirs, you can see that. And, um, the town, um, will, will, um. Likely pretty much spend all their budget too. So, so the six hundred thousand that you see is just from June thirtieth, the actual expenditures. And more to come, July and August.
So this isn't a year end.
This is not a year end.
How much do you think that number will change after the, you know, the transfers you have onboard tonight? I don't know how much they total up to. I'm looking at a lot of them.
What do I think, Peter? Like, how this will all?
Like, will, yeah, will that's six hundred thousand be more like three hundred thousand, you know, or will it be fifty thousand? You know, I mean, do you have any idea? Will it all be eaten up with the, um, the transfers in the, in the, uh. Late bills and things?
I would figure, I would figure that, um, it will all be eaten up. Probably won't be, for sure, it won't be, but to say how much. Um, let's just say, if you wanna figure, if you wanna figure what the fund balance is gonna be, looking at the revenue and the expenditures. Just figure the expenditures are all gonna be eaten up. And we, but we've added to our revenue. Seven hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I saw.
Yeah, yeah, which means we're not gonna need to, by design, we were gonna dip into our fund balance, a million dollars. So we, we, um, both need to do that.
Can I ask you on that, um, what, what did you say the placeholder is for the fiscal year we're in on? Investment income that you're budgeting monthly?
For the new year.
Year we just started, yeah.
Yep, a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars.
Interest income. Okay, and that's about, um. A hundred thousand below what we've been seeing a month, would you say?
Well, I have never seen investment income, three hundred thousand dollars ever. But I, when I was treasuring my revenue, a hundred forty-six thousand, woo hoo, I thought I did a great job for the town. So it's just, um, our money is invested in treasury bills, treasury bills did well. And, and we, we really ended up with an unprecedented to number in interest income. So I, I'm a little worried about the one hundred ninety-seven thousand, I don't know what's. What's, what's what there, but, um, you know, we, we had a good year, our interest income, and we'll take it.
So the, so you're thinking, uh. That that, that three hundred is an anomaly, essentially, okay? And you're, you're a little nervous about almost two hundred thousand being?
I am a little nervous about bringing in two hundred thousand. But who knows, maybe, well, maybe, you know, history will repeat itself. Rates will be, stay high and we'll get three hundred thousand again.
Well, we are, we are poised for the Fed to, uh, to drop it some, yeah.
Yes, we know.
You have any other questions, Brindana?
The other thing I, I noticed was, uh, um. Two hundred thousand in public works and, uh, you know, a hundred and sixty in education. You said you thought education would expend that. Do you think that two hundred thousand is something that would be spent in the remaining sort of? I know, I know they've got something that they, that they wanna do that's in the transfers, but that's like not, that's unbudgeted spending. So I'm not counting that, cause I understand that, but do you think the rest of it is likely to, that much, is that likely to be?
Um, pretty much all of it. I think works will turn back maybe twenty thousand dollars in the budget.
Do they have a lot of late, late in the year, final bills that are of that, that caliber? Or are they buying material ahead?
They have an incubating project in Humbert, and, and, uh. It's, uh.
This is related to the project you were talking about?
No, this is a different project.
Okay.
This is, uh, just, uh, maintenance paving and I, not only is it in Humbert, it's been done, so now we have to pay for it.
Thank you.
Alright, anybody else? So we'll move on now to the transfers.
Yeah, it's quite a bit, it's. It's with this topic.
Oh.
Yeah. There is a, there's the one through thirteen that's on their list of, of the basic transfers, right, Donna? And then you have a request, uh, that involves the roadside mower.
Yes.
Head and stuff like that.
Yes.
And for the furnaces, yes.
So there's three separate mellow's. The first mellow is the usual. The, um, the departments cannot be overspent. So, um, the, these, uh, transfers are to address that.
And you wanna do this, Chris, you wanna go through those, the, the basic transfers to, uh. To true up the account to account, or do you wanna hear from, um, the fire department? And the, uh. And public work, so whatever, keep, um, the two.
You're talking about these ones.
Yeah, the, the ones that, the one that says, uh, that, you know, the, the one that's on the roadside mower. As a flail mower.
Right.
Head that is thirty years old, that's because that's like, you know, asking to use money in the budget for. Uh, something that's not in the budget. So those are different to me in category than the trueing up of the accounts.
Yes.
So you wanna, you know.
So if we do these and ask these ones here?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we have to do them step by step because they all have different accounts, or do, can we do it in one motion?
Well, I thought you liked to do like department by department one at a time.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, um. The town count, the seventeen thousand, we need seventeen thousand more for the lawyers and.
Yes, we have, missing one bill for June, and land use has May and June. So I, twelve thousand dollars overspent, I put five thousand in there, so, um. So I don't have to come back. I don't know what the use was in June, May and June.
We, we've had to do a huge number of contracts that, uh, we weren't expecting. So that's why we're, our lawyer budget is way blown out. We have a water contract with Willington Hill that we're working out. We had the, uh, assessment contract to work out. We had the, uh, union contract to work out. And I can't remember all the other, there was, there was several. There was a request from this board to check on, on whether we were following a legal process. And, and so we have been, uh, really using our lawyer. We've used our lawyer enough that he has handed us off to another lawyer because he's tired of hearing from us. So we got a bunch better. I don't think I should have said that out loud.
So are we good for next year?
Yes.
Uh, cause we based our number for this, this year up of last year's.
Right, we, we, so the, like, the assessment contract is every six years and we're done with that. It's the, uh, union contracts every three, we're done with that. The water contracts every five, we should be done with that soon. They, they got lost because, uh, the Coventry Housing Authority, uh. Refusing to talk to our lawyer because it's gonna cost them money. It's gonna save us money, cost Coventry money, um. And then we, we've had, I, I, I'm sorry, I can't remember the rest of them off the top of my head. I, you had any number of legal issues?
Land, land use flew through the.
Oh, yeah.
Party budget, working with loves to try to get their money back or something.
We also have to deal with the lawyer because we need to move septic from, uh, town land to town land. But there's a, uh, order in between and, uh, the health district is afraid that the town is gonna self-agree. So we need to come up with a contract for that, so. Keep it successful, it will function much better. It's natural, it's free, you're gonna be happy about that. I know you're gonna look when I said.
This is one original project that we're finishing up.
Yeah.
Yep.
And if we don't finish it soon, we change it in on the dark town, so, you know, we gotta, we gotta do this.
Yep.
Yeah, in general. They're in. Yeah, we'll, we'll, somebody, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We, we have key cats here. Right now, we have ways to ride, sir.
So, like, our number eleven, where it talks about sixteen thousand three hundred from transfers out?
Yes.
What's underspent in the transfers out?
So, so what's happening there is planning zoning is, um. There, there's, they are scooping up their unspent budget line. And they want to use it on the document preservation capital project. So we're, we're moving it to what's left over in planning and zoning. To an account called transfers out, which is where we will put our fund transfer money. Because it's going to be transferred to a capital project. So that's what the fund transfer is, and that's, you know, also where you put your money, that you're giving to the reserve.
Right, I understand.
And that, okay, good. So, so we're putting general fund budget money, that's left over. Into transfer out account to transfer to a capital project.
So does, so do, does number seven and number eleven kind of, uh, X each other out in a way?
Yes, they do. Yes, because it's, yes, it's thirteen plus eight plus fifteen hundred plus one thousand, it's sixteen three. And that total is going to the capital project document preservation. For my to keep working on.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Do we wanna do the two, the two ones that probably were, were recorded in special before we go through these? Cause these are, um, standard and then we can let.
Yes.
We could let the.
That is a fine idea.
You know what I mean?
Do these ones here?
Yeah, because they have people here, and they're, they're here to speak about it.
No problem.
Right, the suggested motions for fiscal year twenty-three to twenty-four budget transfer for new furnaces for Willington Hill Fire Department. James Knight, president of Willington Hill Fire Department, has been in touch with first elected Tanaka about two furnaces from nineteen ninety-five in the fire department. Last year, when they were serviced and inspected, the technician identified a crack in the heat exchanger in one of the furnaces and recommended replacing both due to their age. James Knight obtained two bids to replace both furnaces. One was from Williams Oil for twenty-nine thousand two hundred dollars. And the other was from Homestead Heating for twenty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars.
Uh, could I just ask you, James, is that, is one of those your contract, your union contract? Which one is your?
So Hom- Homestead Heating is who we have a service contract with, and that's what made getting free bids rather difficult. Cause their main question is, do you have a service contract with someone? And I've had, I think, four companies say they're not interested because we have a service contract. Um, Williams actually told me no. I, I thanked them for like a half hour on the phone, and finally, okay, I'll give you a bid, but. I don't plan, I don't plan on you using me because you have a contract. And there's a couple other companies that said, those furnaces are too big for them to fit, because they're commercial units.
And they both came in pretty close?
They came pretty close, yes.
Um, I moved to, uh. Transfer. To move, to move unspent funds to, and, uh, to the tune of twenty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars. From zero one point zero eight three one, employee insurance. To zero one point zero 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 four, transfers out. Um, I should correct that, I think it's an, it's an O after the decimal point, so. Zero one point capital O, zero zero four, is that correct, Donna? Yeah, transferred out, sorry about that. And then, uh. Uh, can I do that same one in the same motion?
Yes.
Okay, and then to move twenty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-two. From zero one point capital O, zero zero four, transfers out. To zero three point three zero nine three, Willington Hill Fire Department replaced furnaces. So new account.
Second. All those in favor, say aye? Aye, 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 aye. Any extensions? Any names?
Thank you for having all those votes.
Alright, next, suggested motion for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget transfer for mower head. For two thousand twelve M and B roadside mower. Background, the two thousand twelve M and B roadside mower has a flail mower head. That is thirty years old, needs repair, and due to its age, Troy would prefer to buy a new head for the mower. For ten thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars, he did not plan for this purchase in his budget. The town has funds in the liability insurance line. In the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, this was our first year budgeting and going out to bid for cyber insurance. We suggested fifteen thousand dollars, the actual premiums are less than five thousand dollars. Any questions regarding that?
I have a question, Pete.
Yeah.
Didn't we just buy a new mower?
Yes, that's a big mower. This is the over the rail mower, it's on the long arm with the flail. The, from what I understand, the, the mower head is very old, but the mower. The, the, the mechanical to drive it are, are good for a minimum another five years and they didn't rebuild the arm. But the, uh, the roller that runs the flails is coming off. And should that come off, that would be, uh, bad. So they, they figure it costs at least five thousand dollars to buy the parts to re-weld it together and, and a new one's ten. And, and the welding is not something that they, they feel.
Okay, and when did you say you think the life of it is?
Oh, the, the last one lasted thirty years, I think. Was that, I, I said, it may be twenty years, but for some reason, I talked to Troy this morning and I, I think thirty years is the number. So they, they, since buying this thing in pieces and replacing it is necessary, this is just a head. It's, I think it's important that, that they get this because, uh, I, I don't know what's, what's causing the, the undergrowth. Explosion on, on a roadside, but it's, it's out of hand and. You've been taking it out mechanically with like a head like this, or, uh, with, with some kind of energy. Because the, the state is completely outlawed the use of any chemicals. So the other thing we're looking into is, is, uh, high pressure, high temperature steam. They kill these things off, but I, I don't, I'd really rather do that as a, a regional purchase. Cause you'd need it about three weeks a year and other towns could use it and we could divide it up and. Buy it for a third of the price, that would be nice, that's expensive.
I'd like to move that we, uh, move ten thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. From zero one point zero eight five one insurance. To zero one point capital O, zero zero four, transfers out. And then that same ten thousand nine ninety-five from zero one point capital O, zero zero four. Transfers out to zero three point three zero nine four, mower head, two thousand twelve. M and B new account.
Second. Those in favor, say aye? Aye. All of the opposing, aye? All the extensions? You know.
The goodness is, we're, I think we're the ones that asked you if you, if you wanted to replace two at once, whether it's cheaper, it looks like it, you know. What did we do?
You're gonna go through them one by one?
Yeah, well, yeah. Those those are all one offs, right? Each one's.
I'll do number one. I move that we transfer six hundred and sixty three dollars from. Zero one dot zero one eight one town office operations to zero one dot zero. One eight two town hall operations in this, yeah, that's it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Any extensions unanimous? Number two, two hundred and fifty two dollars from zero one dot zero two three two fire protection dispatch fees. To zero one point zero two three five public fire protection, fire hydrants. Shortfall due to the increase in the cost in the Route thirty two main and hydrants favorable balance and fire dispatch service fees. So moved. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Any extensions unanimous? Number three, seventeen thousand dollars from zero one point zero eight three one employee health insurance to zero one point zero one four one. Town council budgeted shortfall in town attorney, labor attorney, and land use attorney, employee health insurance is under budget.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The extensions, so unanimous. That works, right?
What's that?
This is working, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Number four, one thousand nine hundred and forty eight dollars from zero one point zero one one one. Selectmen to zero one point zero two three four. Emergency management shortfall due to the purchase of a radio for the first selectman's office with FEMA. Dash EMPG funds, the emergency management performance grant is a reimbursement grant. Funds are spent. Then reimbursement follows. Raise fifty percent. New this year, the grant includes equipment purchases. Selectmen is favorable due to staff turnover. So moved.
I'll second.
Yeah. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. Any extensions unanimous? Number five, one thousand five hundred and thirty seven dollars from zero one point zero one one one. Selectmen to zero one point zero one two six election officials. Shortfall in election officials due to second budget referendum. Selectmen is fa- is favorable due to staff turnover.
So moved.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. The extensions unanimous. The next transfer request is to close out a capital project, fund zero three. Number six, eight hundred and fifty dollars and twenty cents from zero three point zero zero three two digitized land use documents. To zero three point three zero nine zero PCC document preserv- preservation. Close out the completed digitized land use project account and move the funds to the PCC. Document preservation account to finish the record scanning project in PCZ. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Extensions unanimous. The next request is to transfer out unspent funds from P and Z, ZBA. Inland wetlands in the building department budgets to fund zero three capital projects. PCC document preservation dash zero three point three zero nine zero. Number seven, thirteen thousand dollars from zero one point zero one seven one planning zoning. To zero one point capital O zero zero four transfers out. So moved.
I second.
Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. The extensions unanimous. Number eight, eight hundred dollars from zero one point zero one seven two zoning board of appeals to zero one. Capital O zero zero four transfers out. So moved. Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. The extensions unanimous. Number nine, one thousand five hundred dollars from zero one point zero one seven six inland wetlands to zero one point. Capital O zero zero four transfers out. So moved, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Any extensions unanimous? Number ten, one thousand dollars from zero one point zero two four one building department to zero one. Point capital O zero zero four transfers out. So moved, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Any extensions, so unanimous? Number eleven, sixteen thousand three hundred dollars from zero one point capital O zero zero four. Transfers out to zero three point three zero nine zero PCC document preservation.
So moved. I'll second.
Hey, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, aye. Any extensions unanimous? Transfer these funds will allow the department to complete the scanning of department records. The second transfer out request is to move unspent funds from consulting engineers to fund zero three capital projects. Uh Route thirty two landscape design, zero three point three zero eight two. Number twelve, five thousand eight hundred eighty five dollars from zero one point zero one eight three consulting engineers land use. Two zero one point capital O zero zero four transfers out.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Okay.
Aye. Opposed, aye. Any extensions unanimous? Then number thirteen, five thousand eight hundred eighty five dollars from zero one point O capital O zero zero four. Transfers out to zero three point three O eight two Route thirty two streetscape design.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Any extensions unanimous? Now, to cover engineering costs due to minor planning, my complete, right, like DOT in preparation of easement language. As required by DOT and CROJ. That is for new business. President to speak, public participation is the very important. Speakers will be limited to time and appropriate comments. Maintain progress, stay on topic, and maintain the form. Do we have anybody for present? No.
Oh, there's a hand.
Yeah, I guess, uh Jim Marshall, Fitzgerald Road. Um, just speaking briefly on two things. I just sent a letter, you guys, you spoke a lot at length about the. Fire department uh facility building committee funding. Um, but I would say that it it is very important. Um, I know me personally serving on the board of uh the capital improvement uh plan committee. Um, there was with the vote or with the decision to give that committee two hundred thousand dollars, there was. Definitely no motive behind that to. Provide more than that. Um, the understanding is, I think, uh both, I think Steph might have pointed out earlier was that. The funds that were allocated to each department individually um were best served to be released. Um, and any funds expended towards the development of those projects, of any future projects or either department. Should be guided by the facility committee. So I know it probably takes a town meeting, um but I would. Greatly urge you guys to explore releasing. Whatever process needs to happen to to explore releasing those funds um back for alternate use. Um, because quite frankly, if we can't get to a point where we have master picture or some order magnitude budgeting. On these fire departments in less than two hundred thousand dollars, then we're doing something wrong. Um. And I would advise, I I mentioned it to the emergency services committee, um. But I would have strongly to get an OPM on board and professional assistants uh so that we can start moving in that direction. I I do understand their focus. Um. But again, from a capital needs perspective, um. That needle needs to move quicker. Um, so. One other point, um and I I I only mention it because I think it bears repeating. Um, I do, I I am incredibly discouraged. And I think it. Uh, the fact that we couldn't get a letter out and that the chair of this committee could not. Work with the other boards in town to get a letter out to explain the budget. More information is never a bad thing. The reasoning for the budget as it stands is never a bad thing to get out to the people. Um, the chair serves the town. The chair represents this board and quite frankly, Mr. Lo, you should have gone past that. And 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 done, worked on behalf of the town instead of your own personal motives. Um, and your own personal beliefs. Cause you serve this board, the board approved that budget. So again, I I hope in future years, um it is definitely worth, even if it costs some money. Um, getting information out to the voters. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Beating welfare.
Um, well, I I just wanted to mention that the CIP committee met last night. Normally, we don't start eating this early in the year, but um we just, you know, there's a lot to think about. Um, that's coming down the pike and that uh we just wanted to get ahead of it. And one of the things that we decided to recommend is um. Putting together like a a ten year plan that's more of of. A planning document rather than just asking people to tell us what what specific things that they know of in the next five years, which. Usually gets loaded into the first two years because they can't think that big um without. Knowing that they are gonna have funds to do it, so um. A- anyway, um we're gonna be asking them all the different boards and the people who ask for money um to. Just answer some really simple, high level questions of where you, where do you see your department going in the next ten years? And what what are some of the big things that you think you're gonna need? And also for the. The public works and the fire departments to give a a a list of all the. All the equipment and when it's gonna be retired, potentially how old it's, should, how old it is, how. Long it's gonna last, what the replacement cost would be, so we can really start planning um. It just knowing what some of these things are. And also the buildings, um how old the roofs are, how old the boilers are. All of that sort of stuff because we we don't have that in the database anywhere and no one's. It's just up to whatever people are on whatever boards and whatever year, if they decide to think about that stuff and ask for it and um get it on the. On the radar. So we're just gonna try to. Get a better understanding because we have some really big things coming, so. We need to plan it, right?
It would also be a real good document, I think, for, you know, uh when there's a changing of the guard. Um, you know, in the selectman's office, because it's really hard for someone to come in cold, not knowing.
Yeah.
You know, um where where potential issues are gonna arise. And like the the boy scout hall is a new kind of a new one, yeah, to peak.
We haven't had that at all.
Yeah, and and a lot of people don't know it's a town that I'm building in the green.
And the dog pound wasn't on our list. The senior center has apparently nothing that they need in the next ten years, the um. But the library just started doing it last year, it's putting things on, but I mean, we can't, we can't deal with these last minute things. Um, and when they, and we should be able to know, predict a lot of it, so. Um, so hopefully we'll be in a better place when we start doing CIP planning this year.
Thank you.
Oh, that, well, that's not gonna be till the fall.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Well.
It is. It is fast, yeah. That's approaching.
Alright, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? So moved. All those in favor, aye. Any names? Extensions unanimous?
Select, you know, you guys are still online and recording.